I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is there anyone else recording? Seeing none, please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently, there were two members, one very recently and one formerly part of the Auburn Public Schools team, so I'd like to just recognize that each of them passed away. First was Rick Patterson. He was a former site manager. He was also the director of Auburn Youth Basketball. He passed away while down in Tennessee on July 26th. He leaves his wife Elizabeth and two daughters, Chloe and Hannah, who one has graduated and one is still a student. So, we certainly wish, and our thoughts or prayers are with his family. Also recently, we read that Mr. A.P. Stevens, who was a former high school principal at Auburn High, passed away on July 17th. He was a graduate of Clark University and received his master's degree from Worcester State College. He became principal at Auburn High in 1966. He is served, excuse me, he is survived by Shirley, his wife of 42 years, as well as two sons and a daughter, two stepsons, eight grandchildren, and one great-granddaughter. So if we could just observe a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you.
Are there any comments? I would just like to thank both of them for their service, both professional and community service. And I'm sure they'll both slowly be missed. Seeing no student representatives here, I would seek approval of the July 9th, 2014 minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a vote. Now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First off, I just wanted to thank you. You have supported me each summer as I've gone to the MASs Executive Institute, it's held down at Mashpee High School each year. And it was a great program again this year, much like the MASs/MASC one. We get to pick from a variety of topics on pertinent subjects. We did get to hear Doris Kearns Goodwin again this year. She was the keynote speaker last year. And she is just a fascinating woman to listen to in all that she and her husband have accomplished. So that was really excellent. Our new teacher orientation, it is already time, very quickly coming upon us to start a new school year. So on Tuesday, the 19th, we hold a leader, new teacher orientation program. The leadership team members, our new teachers and their mentors come. And we also began a tradition last year where we recognize the teachers who have earned professional status. Those are individuals who have successfully served in the school district, teachers. And on the first day of their fourth year, they earn what's called professional status. So, it's a nice way to recognize our new teachers and those who are kind of taking the step forward in their career. We do a tour. We take them on a yellow school bus. We bring them around the town so they get to see each of our schools. We make stops in, I think, four of them. Dr. Lozay coordinates it. Mr. Bouvier speaks, Pam Kaufman speaks, and I speak. I'm not sure if we have any other guests that are speaking on a variety of talk with topics, just to acclimate them, and then they spend the rest of the day with their mentors. So, it's a nice introduction to the schools. And we look forward to introducing you to all of our new staff, and that will come on September 3rd. So, it'll be a nice, nice night. We did include for you an update. We're required to have what's called a district curriculum accommodation plan, a D cap plan. And what this plan outlines is the various strategies that we're committing to putting in place to accommodate students' varied needs. These are options and strategies that we offer to all students. They don't need to be on an IEP or a 504. And it's really our statement of what it is that we commit to doing. The memo does not state this, but I would ask for your vote of approval for this, and that way we will get it posted on the website.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
Great. The quick, ne-asked update, we did hear from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges that the Auburn High School had submitted what's termed the pre-self-study report of Auburn High, and they have reviewed it, and they congratulated Mr. Hanfield for the work that he and his team continue to do. It won't be until the calendar year 2017, when they're scheduled for an evaluation, but this is one of those interim steps, and we continue to stay on track with all things. So that's a, kudos to Mr. Hanfield, Ms. Dunnehugh, and their entire team. As part of the Executive Institute this summer, Governor Patrick made what actually was a surprise visit. He was not a planned guest, but he and members of the school safety and security team, task force, I should say, came and they actually presented what's in your packet as the school safety and security plan. And it details a number of recommendations, particularly on pages 27 to 29. But we should all take great pride and certainly with sincere appreciation to our safety advisory team. Auburn has been really blessed to have this team in place consisting of school, police, and fire representatives. And they have been in place for seven-plus years. In fact, they were maybe not as officially formed 10-plus years ago that they were in place. So, many of the recommendations have already been implemented in Auburn, and we'll share a copy of this with the safety team so that they can continue to do the good work that they have done. The next item, this came as a bit of a welcome surprise to us. Karen Fedella is a French teacher at the high school. And she reached out to Mr. Garno, our Director of Athletics, Physical Education, and Health, to share with him that her dentist, who is from Welcome Smiles Dentistry here in Auburn, had generously offered to fit any Auburn high school athlete with mouthguard, with a mouthguard, free of charge. Included in the packet would be the documentation in terms of, they would have a consent and release form. And what I said to her, well, this is a wonderful offer for them to do, but what we can't do is promote any one particular business. And they have agreed that other than the consent form, it would require the student to go to their office in order to get it fitted properly, but they would not give any coupons, they would not in any way distribute the materials to try and solicit it from them. So, I bring it to you for your consideration. It's my belief that there are many of our students who probably already do this type of mouthguard fitting with their own dentist. But I think especially for those who don't, or for those who may not have such an opportunity available to them, I would give my recommendation, and something that I would ask you to do consider.
I'd make a motion to accept the donation of the free fitted mouthguards for Auburn High School athletes from Welcome Smiles Dentistry of Auburn, and also add with a letter of thanks from the district.
Do I have a second? Any discussion on that?
I think it's a very generous offer, yeah.
I think it's fantastic.
Yeah.
As Dr. Burnell said, for those who can't afford to have them fitted, I'm sure they're just jamming them in there any which way, and then the way we used to do is boil them in water.
Yeah, there you go, boil them in water.
I think this is fantastic. I hope they all take advantage of it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. I will let Ms. Fedella and Mr. Garno know and let them get that information out. Actually, next week, student fall athletes will start to come in, so this is great.
And now move on to unfinished business?
Great. The modeling, the model, excuse me, Auburn's Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, I included in here a copy for you. If you remember, this was first created, all school districts were required to do so prior to December 31st of 2010. Since then, since then, there have been a couple of updates in the law. And this most recent one is actually the Chapter 86 of the Acts of 2014, which was passed, or signed, I should say, in April. So, I've kept on here the dates that they have been updated, and noted and read any of the changes. And it is my recommendation that you approve this new plan. And what we would do is post it on the website. We have it both within the staff and parents section, and it would be available in schools as well. What we'd do, assuming you approved it, is we would accept all of these changes and make sure that everything was aligned properly. But it does comply with all of the tenets of the Chapter 86.
I'll make that motion.
Any second? Is there any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is an item which you can either ask, direct me to keep on or to take off, the tune-up and tool-up that MASc offers. They are willing to come out and do a training, should you wish to do so. And perhaps it is something that with the next item, when a new member comes on, you may want to wait and consider to do then. That's up to you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. As we all know, sadly, you as a school committee accepted the resignation of Mr. Laurie effective July, excuse me, except, I don't want to get ahead of myself, I was going to say July of 15, of September 1st of 2014. We've been working with the Board of Selectmen to get a date selected. It will be a joint appointment of the board and school committee. And I'm happy to report that August 27th is the date that has been offered by them. It is a Wednesday evening. So assuming that works, we would be in touch with the chair, schedule the time, the location, and be back in touch.
Is there any discussion on that?
Just, we had, we had talked, because obviously last, in July, I announced that I'd be resigning September 1st. I didn't realize it'd be a little bit with vacation season, some schedule conflict. So I was prepared tonight to basically rescind my resignation pending my replacement being named. But seeing how this is the August 27th date, I don't think that's necessary. I think the September 1st date should stand and is appropriate. And I'm glad, hopefully, the 27th is agreeable with the committee, so my replacement can be named.
Everyone is in agreement with the 27th?
Yep.
Now, that's, that's not the Board of Selectmen regularly scheduled meeting. That would have been on a Monday. And I think one of their members, Mr. Carpenter, was unable to make that. So we do want to accommodate him. We want to make sure that everyone has some input on this selection. So, the 27th sounds good. Should that become an issue, then certainly we could readdress your situation as far as stepping down.
As far as, what would be the timeline on that? Would it be 7:00 o'clock last night, or?
Um, I think that would be a 7:00 o'clock start.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. I will be in touch and be back in touch with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for being flexible.
It's just a placeholder on our budget, that FY '16 budgeting will soon get underway. So if you, there are priorities, please be sure to share them with Mr. Barber and I. School building committee, we had a meeting last night. We had a tour of the new middle school. And everybody in attendance was really in awe, I think it's fair to say, of the building. It really is coming together beautifully. We got to actually go upstairs to the second level. And they've not yet poured the concrete for the media center, but the classroom wings, all are poured. This morning's construction meeting, I think the, it's a section of the gym, is that the slab is going to be done in two weeks, and that's a real milestone for them. So, they continue to be on time and on budget, so we're in great shape, really great shape.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The beam that people are signing, is that going to be visible when you walk in the building? This is the big debate with the kids and I, so I need this addressed.
So, it won't be visible when you go in. Tomorrow, at the topping-off ceremony that will take place at 10, and we actually moved the beam a little earlier than we anticipated. I didn't expect it was going to rain all day today, unfortunately. We had lots of kids and families come yesterday. So, it'll be placed over by where, near the Masonic and Life Care Center. We'll actually tomorrow at 10, there'll be just a brief ceremony, a few words spoken, and the crane will actually lift it into place. Now, what I learned last night is when they go into the attic, you'll be able to see the beam from the sides, not necessarily the top, but you'll be able to see it from the side. So, it will be placed there, but it will not be visible to the naked eye.
Okay. So my husband was right.
Yeah.
Mr. Page?
I'd just like to say, I was one that went too.
It was a big debate.
And I thought the presentation was outstanding.
Yeah, they did a great job.
I mean, I know I've dealt with constructions for many, many years, through different things. But, um, just the, the whole presentation was, it was very down-to-earth, so everybody could understand what was going on. And the job that they've been doing is just fantastic. And this may sound a little crazy, but the thing that kind of impressed me too was, is the, how cleanliness the site was. You go to a lot of construction places, always stuff here, there's stuff here, there's, you know, everything, cement, everything, all over the place. And it, the site was very, very clean. And it just kind of, I was one of the people that had a problem with voting Fontaine when this first project started. But after seeing the magnitude of the work and what they have done, and the way they conduct themselves, I totally changed my mind and very pleased with the way it went on last night.
It's good to hear.
It's good news.
Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I will tell you, we have a fantastic team in place. I'm sure all of you read, just a few weeks ago in the Sunday Telegram, some horror stories of districts in the area and challenges that they have had in building projects. And LPA, Skanska, Fontaine, they really are top-notch, really top-notch. So we're very fortunate.
So is the opportunity for signing the beam over now?
No, so actually tomorrow, they'll place the beam near the Life Care Center, right outside of the gate. So those who weren't able to sign it today will have the opportunity to tomorrow, if they want to come in the morning, probably by 8:00 or so, it should be out there. And then at 10:00, there'll be a few people saying a few words, and then we'll watch the crane get lifted into place. I mean, the steel beam. The crane will lift the steel beam into place, not the crane into place.
Very nice.
That will stay on the ground, I hope.
So make sure you sign the beam on the sides and not the top or the bottom.
That's right, that's right.
Should you ever make your way to the attic again, you'll want to see your signature.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, good news.
Uh, school building master plan team, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to drive by 10 Swanson Road, but the parking lot is just about nearly done. Today's weather obviously put a little bit of a delay on things, but they've been doing an outstanding job, and we thank them for their work in the collaboration with the town in getting all of that done. Mr. Rengard, our chairperson, Mr. Miller, Joe Fahey, and I met on Tuesday, and we reviewed through the proposals to design the lower level. We're going to add a teachers' room, two bathrooms, expand the kitchen, as well as for an adult alternate upstairs to redesign the office. So it is our recommendation that you approve NALT Architects. They were the lowest responsible bidder at $25,000.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. The 400 iPads, thanks to Mr. Barber and Mr. Bouvier's help, arrived on July 29th, and they are working hard to get those ready for distribution. They'll actually be distributed on the 21st, the 25th, and 28th. And both principals will be doing one-call announcements to let families know when they will be invited. And it will be required that they attend one of those programs because they'll need to sign paperwork. What I included in your packet was the iPad, student and parent iPad agreement form. And this details what our expectations are, how students are expected to treat the iPads, and parents support, and making sure that they're charged. And it outlines our expectations for them. So, it is my recommendation, if you have any questions, Mr. Bouvier is here, as well as Mr. Barber. We can answer these, but we've gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, both principals, Dr. Lozay, Mr. Barber, and Mr. Bouvier and I. And with your approval, we can probably talk about the insurance document now as well. This actually, if you recall, back in the spring, you agreed as a school committee to, so for students to get what amounts to a $5,000 iPad that they'll have full use of home and during school, for the entire school year, we would charge them a $40 insurance policy, to be sure that it protected the district as well as the families against any loss, as detailed in here. So, I'm going to turn it over, or ask you if you have any questions, and turn it over to Mr. Bouvier or Mr. Barber for this. But it is our recommendation that you approve these documents. And I'll ask Mr. Barber, just to go through briefly, what we would intend to do would be to self-insure these, and he can explain, and we believe it would be a fiscally responsible, prudent thing for us to do.
Are there any questions before Mr. Barber gets started? No? No? Okay.
Okay, in your handout, you actually see two different documents. What we've done is we've compiled a calculation report showing upon the receipt of a $40 amount of self-insurance funds that we'd be collecting from each student that's going to be receiving an iPad. On the first sheet, it shows you just for a projection of fiscal year '15 and the actual for fiscal year '14. You'll see that last year, when we had distributed 200 iPads out as part of a pilot program, we encountered only three problems with those 200 iPads. And in doing so, we identified that in essence, it was about $99 per iPad charge in order to correct the issues that took place with those iPads. By doing that, what we've done is used last year's activities and the repair costs to kind of project what's going to occur potentially over a one-year, and then a two- and a third-year perspective. As you can see from fiscal year 2015 on that same sheet, we've identified that if you have 400 iPads being distributed, and upon the $40 per iPad being collected, we would intent, in turn, collect approximately $16,000 worth of fundings that we'd be able to utilize from a self-insurance perspective, putting it into an account that we'll speak about in a little while, that will allow for us to identify what our true costs might be, rather than paying for an insurance policy or some other means that we would not be self-insuring ourselves and potentially having almost a loss of money. Because as you can tell, by only having three occurrences last year, if we use that same perspective and identify maybe an 8% cost for repairs of need, that would cost us approximately 32 iPads that we would encounter for potential cost by doing that comparison evaluation. Keeping that in mind, if we do collect hypothetically $16,000 for that initiative of $40, we would in essence have to almost have 160 or over 40% of our iPads to be repaired in order to incur all the costs that we collected as an actual expense to do those repairs. Keeping that in mind, because that's just a one-page summary for you, you'll see in your second sheet where we kind of did a projection of that same type of 8% mentality over the four-year period that this, the iPad initiative will be taking place from. So, in doing that, from 2015's perspective, and having those repair costs of, again, of approximately 8%, we'd be looking at approximately $3,200 worth of out-of-pocket costs that we'd be able to identify from the self-insurance policy that we're going to be implementing, allowing us to have approximately $1,200 that would be allowed to be retained in a revolving account that we'll be discussing shortly. Continuing, continuing that same process, and also having an increase in the number of iPads that we'd be distributing each year, as you can see on the very top, we're going to be acquiring, for instance, 400 iPads this year. Next year, between the iPad initiative and another 400 iPads, plus with the, the agreement of the middle school, we would also be acquiring an additional 560 iPads through the construction project of the middle school. We're looking at hypothetically speaking, next year, having close to just about 1,400 iPads that we'd be distributing, again, at that $40 perspective rate, we'd be collecting an additional $54,000 next year. And then, again, continuing that up, we'd be going for another 400 iPads the following year for approximately 1,760 iPads, again, at a $40 rate, collecting another $70,000. This would allow for us to definitely cover all of those potential opportunities of loss or wear and tear on these particular iPads. In addition, if there is not a use for those fundings that are collected, it could also be used to actually cover some of the, some of the costs needed to actually purchase the next phase of the iPads as well. So in essence, all fundings being collected would in turn be used to actually self-sustain those iPads for wear and tear, for repairs, and also for the acquisition of the future iPads as well. Do you have any questions?
The other thing I'd like to ask is, somebody that's less fortunate and that has to pay for this, is there a way to do something about that? Do you have some kind of mechanism in there to help them?
We did actually, on the iPad agreement, the last item is, they check off that they understand that the district may provide financial assistance to assist in paying the insurance premium. So we would require, you know, whether it's through the free "We Do Lunch" or documentation, so we put it explicitly on there so that people would be aware that, should they need it, they just need to request it.
Thank you very much.
I could make a motion to approve the insurance document drafted, which outlines the items and conditions under which we insure the iPads that have costed $40 per iPad.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
Great. I want to thank Mr. Barber for his work on the insurance and the analysis, and Mr. Bouvier for his work, as well as his teams. This is a very exciting initiative, so it is wonderful.
Did you want to just take the technology special revenue account, make that motion?
That would be perfect, yes.
I'd also make a motion to approve the establishment of a special revenue account, technology revolving account, in order to accept payments for the insurance of the iPads.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that.
And then also, as just an additional part of the business and financial services portion, in planning of the expiration of our fiscal year 2014 utility and energy agreements for the district relating to the usage of electric, oil, and natural gas, newly established customer representative agreements, or CRAs, were created through the French River Collaborative, of which we are a member of. We also renewed our, our service relating to electricity, which we had utilized our previous broker. So, the following is a list in, also, that you'll see of the brokers for the 2015 fiscal year that we would be utilizing for our three forms of utilities. One of which is the Energy Rebate Inc., which is for electric, which we're going to be at approximately 10, just under 10 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt. The Petroleum Traders Corporation for oil, which we're going to be at approximately $3.1 per gallon. And then the Sprague Operating Resources LLC, which, per Decotherm, we're going to be paying approximately $6.8, again, per Decotherm. I think I put us out of order last time, it was the last one, I apologize. But I'll make that motion, too, that's all right.
We know you're leaving, we'll let you get away with it.
Yeah, try last minute, I gotta.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
The, the hi, just a quick, so the hiring update. We continue to, to hire individuals, and the principals continue to bring forward great people. Do want to just update you on the MSBA accelerated repair. The final piece that's due to them, it's not actually due until September 4th, but we will have it submitted, our goal is by next Friday, is the maintenance plan. It's really just in uploading lots of documents that we have in place. Mr. Barber did his portion today, so we'll continue to keep you apprised. The upcoming events, each of the elementary schools, and now the high school and middle school have programs either this first day, or the day before the first day, or within that first week, whether it's an ice cream social, the iPad distribution, back-to-school picnics, really to welcome students and families back, which is a wonderful tradition that they have started.
Policies? And now move on to policies. Mr. Bouvier, did you have anything that you wanted to share?
No.
As far as the iPads go?
Here is backup. We'll wait, now's the wait for the case. The two policies that you reviewed on first reading, and as our recommendation, you approved them, they were the model ones, MASc regarding the quarry policy and background checks on second reading. You can take those as a group if you would like, those two.
Absolutely. I wouldn't stand a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve both of them?
Yes.
As written. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, sorry, I missed, well, I have heard some feedback already about the, the fingerprinting, and that people don't have access. It's not readily available for them to go and have it done. So, you had talked about the mobile.
Yes. If they've not actually, that's something that they're intending to do. They've not yet shared that information. But I am aware that when people have called, particularly for Worcester in this area, they're not even able to get an appointment before school starts. But they do have time to get that accomplished. But we definitely will be reaching out for the mobile. And I suspect all districts around are going to want to do that because we're really just implementing this with new employees at this point. Once we do those who have already been employed, it's going to be a massive influx of people. So, that's our intention, definitely, to bring them out. For sure. And then finally, and I thank Mr. Bouvier for this update, especially with the implementation of the iPads, you reviewed through the acceptable use policy. There were only a couple of minor changes to this, which actually don't seem to show on here, I apologize. Basically, what we did is, he separated out grades three through five, and then six through twelve regarding, in terms of the Google apps for education. So it is my recommendation that you approve this. And you only need to do it once, because it's an amendment.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Great. Thanks. So we have, we do need a brief executive session, yes.
I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session under Master General laws, Chapter thirty, Section twenty-one, Section eighty-two, to discuss strategy if we got to union in non-union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So roll calm.
Mr. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie, yes.
Great.
Because I suppose we do that.
Yeah, that's perfect.